We'll call the meeting over. We'll have the pledge and the prayer raised by Councilmember Zimmerman.
Let me just do the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we're just ever so thankful that we have the opportunity as citizens that were elected by the public to represent them and to look after their interests in this city. We just pray that you help us to make good, wise decisions and that they would benefit our community and that the community be proud that they put us in these offices. Be with those that are placed in a position to protect this community and pray that you would be with them and help them to stay safe for the rest of seasons, Jesus.
Okay, approval of the agenda. Is there any problems with the agenda? Motion approved.
I second it.
Motion by Michael, second by Brent. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, motion passed. Citizen comments? Is there anybody from the public that wants to say anything? April, how's everything going?
Good.
Good, good, alright. Okay, item E.
Honorable governing body, so Mayor Larkin asked us to honor some of the students for the Eisenhower High Homecoming. So we, first of all, we want to congratulate the 2021 Eisenhower Homecoming King and Queen, Brody May and Abigail Briscoe. Brody and Abigail accepted the honor last Friday night at the Eisenhower Homecoming game. So a little more, bit more about Brody, who's here with us tonight, and we'll honor him in just a second. Brody is the 2021 Homecoming King. He follows in the step footsteps of his brother Parker, who was also here tonight, who was Homecoming King three years ago. Brody is seventeen years old and a senior at Eisenhower High School. Many students were rooting for Brody this year and were excited to see him take the crown. So thanks to Brody for representing a winning attitude, a great heart and school spirit at Eisenhower High School in Goddard, Kansas. We also wanted to recognize the rest of the homecoming court. So we have them pictured here tonight. We have Kate Friend, Abigail Bachman, Mason Levine, Mackenzie Henry, Brody May, Abigail Briscoe, Cale Sanderson, Abby Nelson, Cabree Moore, and Cody Hawks. And then we also have our court prince and princess here, Kenneth Thali and Ren Boxa. So with that being said, I know the mayor wanted to shake hands with the king.
Yes. You look a hell of a lot better than I do.
Can you see her?
Yep. We got four coming?
Oh.
Oh, four. Let's go up there.
And there's Kate and Mason and Cody.
Well, this picture's been a little bit for my campaign website, guys. Alright, let me get in the middle here. Brody, you get the yellow bit of, yeah. Yeah, now that's good, alright. Whatever you guys do.
Do we need the wide angle?
Never been out of pop.
The answer is yes.
Okay, alright, well, thank you guys for coming out. How was your guys' senior year going, Lord?
It was good.
Alright, good job. Got you. Alright, well, thank you guys for coming out. Brody, very good, you have a good one, okay?
Thank you.
Alright, alright. You guys take care. If you want to listen to the rest of the meeting, you're more than welcome to. I don't know if you do, though. Alright, guys. Keep laughing. Okay. Yeah. Okay, next item, item half one. Now, let's just consent agenda. You guys have a problem with the county's pavement? Let's go over the motion. Motion by Larry.
Second.
Consent.
I guess the motion can be a little bit.
Motion.
You approve the consent agenda.
Motion for the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Brent. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Item H1.
Honorable Mayor and City Council. Arbor Creek Phase Two paving and grading improvements bid awards. Pearson Construction was the low bid. We're asking for a bid award to Pearson Construction and authorization of the mayor to execute the construction agreement for the improvements. The petitions were accepted and approved on June 21st. The tent notes were issued on July 19th. The resolution with the improvements are listed also in your staff report, but on the PowerPoint here for a total issuance of $882,000 for the improvements. And the difference between the 930 and the 882 is the capitalized interest on the temporary notes. Thirteen companies were solicited, four bids were received. The lowest was Pearson Construction totaling $242,311.50. The bid breakdown was $83,157.50 for grading and $159,154 for the paving. This is standard contract template for what's been used for Arbor Creek for both Phase One and then the Phase Two, stormwater, water distribution, water main, and sanitary sewer. You also have in your staff report pictures of what's actually being paved, which is the gray section here. So you'd be having it off of Brookside onto Thicket, and then we'll have Ravenswood. And I'm sorry, I can't quite make out the other one from that. These improvements are financed and administered in accordance with the statutes relating to the special assessments. The improvements are to be 100% financed by the improvement district with the petitioner developer owning 100% of the improvement district. If there are no questions over the bid process or submitted for either myself, the city engineer, or the public works director, it's staff's recommendation to declare Pearson Construction as the best bid and award the bid to Pearson Construction to construct the Arbor Creek Phase Two paving improvements, as well as authorizing the mayor to execute the construction agreement for said improvements with Pearson Construction. Both of those can be taken in a voice vote.
Can they be done together?
Yeah.
Okay. I like the motion. Both action items will be approved.
Second. Motion by Michael, second by Brent. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, motion passed. Item H2.
H2 has received a request for assistance and development participation from ICT Development for the plating of 88 acres located at the northeast corner of 215th Street West and 23rd Street South. City received a request for funding assistance with the letter contained in the staff report on Friday. We've been having previous discussions with the developers and communication with their engineer. Throughout part of this process, we didn't see the actual packaged framework until Friday. I was able to have a conversation with Chris Bohm of Garber Construction as it was sent. So we were able to talk through some of the items contained therein. The area is contained within the southwest growth corridor sanitary sewer basin that we completed in June of this year. It shows how we would grow west and south with the bulk of that growth being south, and how we might be able to oversize and capture some efficiencies through that process. What you have on the slides in front of you is essentially verbatim the request contained in your letter in the staff report, and that's a request, they're requesting that the city participate at half cost or $300,000 of an estimated $600,000 lift station forced main project, which would be a four-inch forced main with 173-acre service area. They would then petition independently for the development itself for the sanitary sewer laterals, and then that would be assessed equally per each lot, which is how we usually do those types of improvements. They're aware of the equity fee discussion that we had had last council meeting, and they're proposing that with the creation of this equity fee, that the $1,500 per lot be utilized and applied toward the city's $300,000 portion. They anticipate at this time plating approximately 202 lots that'll generate $303,000 based upon that $1,500 per lot. And then the city extending 12-inch water mains to the two entrances that are conceived, one off of 215th, one off of 23rd Street South, with the interior mains being specially assessed in much the same manner as the sanitary sewer. And then paving and drainage would occur on their own per lot as well. We have the developers and their engineering team here to answer any questions that you might have. It is directed that you at least receive this request, and you can then direct staff accordingly. Thank you.
Chris Bohm is here from Garber.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. Is the letter copy, Mr. Silkai, is it on there?
Yes, sir. Not on the actual screen.
Okay, okay.
Sorry.
So, basically, the $300,000, instead of us doing it like we normally do with specials, you're just asking that the city, the $300,000 towards the project?
Correct. So the lift station that would go up the south end of the new development, and if you look in your packet, you'll see a conceptual layout, and it shows where the lift station could be located. There is additional area that can be served by that lift station, to the north and some to the east. Harland Fouracre pointed out that you've got a sewer main across on the south line of Kellogg that goes south a little bit on 215th over to that Dillon's facility. There is an acreage across the north side of that next 80 acres that could be served by gravity, but it's going downhill all the way. So we did a quick look at a five-foot service depth, and I sent that to Harland as well. So that area conceivably could be served from the north with that existing sewer main. This lift station, however, the way it's situated and the way the ground falls, we would leave a stub or two adjacent to the bike trail, and it could be easily punched in and go into the next 80 to the north and not knowing when they want to develop or what have you. But they would most certainly have sewer service available to them for the entire site. You could make the case that it might be cheaper to bring that sewer up if someone developed that 80 acres, because you're not going to fight the grade coming back down, and you could right-size the grade all the way through that site. But that would be a decision at that time when it was developed. Do we have a copy of that map, just to show them what we're talking, or not, on the screen? That's great. Okay, no problem. It's in their packet.
It's page 71, 160.
Good, good. So that's kind of the lay of the land on that lift station. There's no other way to service that ground in between, so north, this acreage needs the lift station, and then the other acreage to the north, what was it, 50 acres or so, and 30 acres to the east. Those are the ones that would need the lift station to be served. If you oversize a lift station, the cost is very slight, so you know, if you need a lift station, you kind of do the heavy lifting of everybody paying. So the proposal, looking at the numbers, and the city of Goddard was very gracious in doing some soil testing, so we could look and see if the lift station would be in groundwater, which drives up the cost. It doesn't appear that it will be, so that cost is fairly firm, short of having a full design on the site. But if you look at the acreage, it's about 50/50, and that's what we're asking for your consideration, about a 50% contribution. Oh, there it is, okay, very nice, very nice.
This is kind of why the equity fee is so important, because it covers the city's portion, right? It should actually cover more than it, the equity fee.
If you implement the equity fee, you'll get about $300,000, a little over. I think we had 202 lots in the count that we showed in the concept. That could go up, or it could go down a little, you know, just based on plating. Similarly, you would presumably take that equity fee on the acreage to the north when it went. So then if you did all of the basin with equity fee, if that developed in three or four years, that itself would pay for the lift station. Although ICT Development's happy to petition half of that cost, $300,000, against the lots, to help defray that cost. On the waterline front, we would ask that waterline, a waterline or two waterlines be brought in either to the westerly entrance or at the south across the school property and up off of 23rd Street to serve the ground. And I know Harland, you haven't had a chance to look at that as far as the distribution capability of that. But if I can go to the map, if you can still hear me okay. You've got water to about right here. You'd bring water down as a 12-inch into the first entrance, that's one option that you could consider. Or you've got water up to the school, and if there was a way to bring water across the south end of the school property, get a private usement across the 300 feet or so private property there and into the site. And then similarly, at the intersection here, bring it over to the first entrance, that would make two eight-inch connections to the subdivision, and that might be suitable as well. That would be cheaper. That would be a cheaper method of bringing water into the site. So on that, Chris, I'm just reading your paragraph here in your letter. You say you would, the developers would pay for the interior waterline system, but those extensions to bring water to the development, you'd be asking the city. That is correct. To stand that cost as well, okay. And then as is the custom, we would bring water lines on each roadway out to the adjacent street right of ways, so you could cross-connect at any time in the future that you felt you needed to. An advantage of the line down 215th is that it would serve both sides of that road for, you know, three-quarters of a mile.
How many homes roughly in the first year do you guys think?
I'll let Brian Legally come up and talk about what he wants to build there and how quickly that site will develop.
We'd probably do it, we're hoping we can do it in two phases. So we're looking at probably 70, 65, 70 lots in the first phase. We may go a little bit more, we feel we got, depending on timing, when we get this going, we really believe that we have the first phase sold out as far as the lots go. So we'll probably be closer to that 65, 70 lots in the first phase.
What's the average price range?
We're going to do a mixture of duplexes and single families, going to have, kind of segregate them, going to have little pods of duplexes kind of scattered throughout is what we want to do, instead of just having a big confluence of them. So the duplexes would probably start around that, I just sold some Wichita there, the total for the two was like $340.
$340.
Mm-hmm. So I'm hoping we could sell halves, starting at probably around that 1 and 1/4 to 150 is where we're hoping to start, and then kind of have them go up from there. And then as we go to the north, we're thinking that the price of the homes, the single families and stuff, the single families get a little more dense as we go to the north, and I think the value would go up as well as we get closer to that train track.
And so that's 220 lots. So you actually have more than 220 doors.
Yes.
So that actually, yeah, or 202, not 202, yeah. So if you're putting duplexes as well, keep beating it into that adds to the three-mile radius density that we're needing, so. Are there any questions that you guys have?
How much bigger is this thing going to be as far as the lift station, as it comes? Harland, maybe you can, is there any potential for development around there that would use that lift station as well?
Yes, that previous slide, if you could put that previous slide on, please.
You mean the map or?
The map, yeah, the larger map of the larger area, please. That's it, yeah.
I get turned.
So the blue area is this development on that map, the blue rectangle. The orange boundary is what determines the gravity sewer capability of that lift station. That would be the service area for that lift station.
Well, I guess like what Mike thought it was too was eventually, well, the land just west of there will want to come in eventually, and then that capability of serving the west across the road.
If you went west across the road, you could go for a little bit of distance, but that ground drops off to the west, so soon enough that sewer would daylight going to the west. So there's not a huge basin it could serve going west.
Yeah, I think what he's saying, Larry, is there's limited potential both going west and south, because the topographic elevation drops off, and obviously, we have some limitation as how deep we could be with the wet well where these lines gravity drain into. So I think he's pretty well identified the drainage basin, the sewer drainage basin that could be served by this lift station. Now, other parts to the south, you know, the study that Brian referred to was for future, a future lift station, and immediately south, those are mostly five-acre, I believe, five-acre lots, and they mostly have lagoons on-site systems. So that really probably wouldn't be conducive to be served by this, so.
Harland, we're not necessarily paying to oversize the lift station, we're just paying to help.
No, I think Chris alluded to that, too. Essentially, the heavy lifting you do up front is, there's not a lot of increase in the cost of the lift station. There might be, let's say you went from a three horsepower to a five horsepower pump, but you got to have the infrastructure, you got to have the wet well there, which is the big cost, the piping, the padwork, the generator, that sort of thing, and that was one thing. This does include a backup generator. We had discussion with, Brooke chimed in and thought it would be good to have a backup generator for this also, so. But no, essentially, I think the service area that he's outlined in orange there is the area to be served by this lift station, from now and into the future. Harland, are there any other questions that you have for Garber that are unanswered or that?
I guess the only thing I'd have is, and this is maybe a question for city staff, is just to consider, you know, what was the intent of the sewer plant equity fee? I mean, this is essentially equity, or like development costs related to a lift station. And so I know we talked about two different things here. We talked about assessing a square footage fee versus, and a plant equity fee, because that essentially pays for the wastewater treatment, the treatment facility that you spent seven million or whatever it was, you know, five, 10 years ago. So that would be the only differentiation that would, might require some further discussion.
Two, we're putting that money aside to help get our plant up towards and handle all this additional, you know, all this additional sewage, and not necessarily to pay for the lift station, but to put that money aside so when we need to upgrade that plant to more capacity, we'll have the money there without having to have another tax increase on the general population.
Isn't that exactly what this equity fee does?
Well, it allows for the lift station, it's part of your infrastructure system. It wouldn't go right to your treatment plant, insofar.
Well, in the future, Mark.
In the future.
I can't answer that, Mayor. I believe that is what the equity fee does, is separate from the lift station, what's being proposed here, and it will go towards what Councilman Zimmerman is speaking of for the lift station future.
Yeah, mechanically, on the financing, it would not go to the lift station, but it would be monies that you would generate by virtue of the development that you could use in the way that you saw fit for either distribution or treatment, for water and sewer, as you saw fit. Then hopefully, if you do that, other lots, as they develop in the community, will build that war chest for you, for your future costs.
And obviously, if you do something here, you obviously need to consider that same, you know, you got to be across the board here for that 85 acres or whatever it is that would develop to the north there, you know, it has to be equitable to all, this developer and future developers, so. But whatever you decide to do there. It's kind of why we didn't establish that 6.2 block or square foot since, so we could be flexible, so we can adjust from development to development and service area. Well, my question for you guys is, where do you want to go? Do you want to, I guess, take a little bit more time for city staff to ask questions regarding, do you want to do the development? What do you want to do? Matt, have you had a time to analyze how this would impact things?
I've taken a cursory glance at it. I haven't really compared it, looking at what I know is in our capital budget for the next five years, this would, we would have to, potentially have to push things back. I haven't had a chance to get, really get into it. Yep.
Okay, so how long is it going to take for us to have a good?
Okay, so how long is it going to take for us to have a good answer from everybody?
Well, I don't want to, I personally don't want to see the city at large have to front the cost of new development, if that's what it's going to be. Nobody, nobody help the existing city at large to develop, and to ask the city that's already in existence to front the money to help get your development going. I don't think it's fair to the city at large as a whole.
I guess, I guess the question I have is how, like with the equity fee broken up for the half of it, that the city would front, and then the equity fee would come back on the back end to replenish that, I guess. But that equity fee was supposed to be for, not for the lift stations, is that what you guys were saying?
That's, I thought it was for keeping the plant up.
Just maintenance of the plant itself.
There's a benefit fee and an equity fee.
A benefit and an equity. Okay. Okay.
So how much is the benefit fee then? Is that on the table, too?
We, we haven't had a chance to, to look at how we were going to proceed with that since we just completed that at the last council meeting. My, you know, my concern is, is how do we, how do we cash flow the investment and making sure that our ducks are in a row for that, so that we minimize any potential risk to the city on that front? In other words, we're out $300,000. Are we paying cash? If we're paying cash, what's the offset? If we're going to go ahead and issue debt, then what's the impact on that? And then the city at large did, plays a larger role on, on cash flowing the principal and interest charges for that while the other, while the area around it begins to develop. Those are things that Matt and I and Ryan and Kevin Cowan, our bond attorney, would need to make sure that we had all of our ducks in a row to be able to understand exactly where we were stepping before we stepped, so that we weren't kind of cut short or surprised.
Okay. Also, what's it, Harland, do you know what it's going to cost for us to get water lines to the development?
Uh, no, I haven't put an estimate to that yet. This is kind of, I think, this is one of the reasons is that Brian asked for some sort of a letter of request or something, so that we could sit down and put some numbers. So they have pretty good numbers on the sanitary sewer. We now need to develop some numbers for the water main extension. So that, I guess that's another piece to the puzzle that I haven't, haven't had a chance to prepare for yet, but we can do that in pretty short order.
And in the same manner that we did with Elk Ridge on our oversize, with Arbor Creek for the Southeastern Grove corridor lift station, and Rustic Creek, we would want to have a development agreement in place, so that way both parties understood exactly what would be undertaken. How long is it going to take to get all this information?
Yeah, you think you'll have it ready by the next meeting?
Hey, I can, I can show you what our, what cash we have available. I can show you that now, but I'm just saying it's going to.
How long is it going to take, how long is it going to take to have all the numbers crunched to figure out? Because we've been working on it for quite some time. And if we delay it another two weeks, okay, but I want to have an answer for the council so we can make a good decision. I want to delay it another two weeks, and then another two weeks, and then another two weeks.
Well, I do. My answer is, we have cash for this. It means putting off other capital projects. It means other things that we've previously committed to that get, have to get pushed back, because we do not have $300,000 in spare cash for this.
And I think in two weeks, I can have, I can have an engineer's estimate for the water lines. But again, I guess, we requested this on Friday, okay? So I didn't have time to get it done today.
And a big part of our previous discussions was trying to ascertain how, how do we get the numbers? Why are the numbers what they are? Why a 30 horsepower pump rather than a 17 and a half? Why a four-inch force main rather than a six-inch? Making certain that the lift station that the city would then be responsible for maintaining is in line with the other three lift stations that we have in our system, so that it's, it's part and parcel to the care and maintenance that we're familiar with, that we have our maintenance agreements for the generators. We just want to make sure that we understand exactly what the costs are that we're making the recommendation.
And just, just so I'm clear, I think, I think, Chris, you can correct me if I'm wrong, you're asking the city, not for oversizing, you're asking the city to extend the water main from Kellogg down to your north driveway, and you're asking the city to bring a water main from Walnut West over to the development, either one. If, if one of those works to give the quantity and pressure that's necessary, whichever, it can be what, either of those two. But I, I guess my initial thought, though, is it would be better to have it looped from the city perspective. So I'm going to probably suggest that not only if we bring it down 215th, we also pursue bringing it across to tie it into Walnut. So we do both of those, so that it is looped.
Okay.
That's a good idea.
Well, I'm not such a big hurry that we make a mistake like we did down in Elsow.
Yeah, I'm kidding.
And if it takes longer, it takes longer. But that's what got us into problems down there, and we ended up spending more than we should have.
Yeah.
And that's why we made all these new rules, so we wouldn't make that mistake again. I'm not in a hurry to make the mistake again.
Yeah. Okay, well, can we have this, can we talk about this on the next meeting? Is that okay with you guys?
I have two good figures.
So we need to make a motion to tables until next meeting?
And direct the staff to, with what items you want from them?
I mean, I don't think you need to make a motion or anything. I think just, okay, let's take it up at the next meeting.
Okay.
And Harland, will it include estimate on purchasing right away to get through there where we need to go?
Well, I mean, theoretically, I think we could, we could probably lay in the county right of way, assuming, you know, I make a phone call just to make sure. We'd be laying in public right of way there. If we were to lay an easement, we'd have to get an easement off the north property line to bring it down 215. But then obviously, yeah, we've got to bring it in an easement from Walnut Street. We've got to get it over there. So we'd have to make some sort of an estimate for the cost of that real estate.
The only other question is, we passed these different ordinances and so on last meeting, there were two different, two different fees, and now we're only asking for one. I don't know why. Or are we only asking for one?
Well, one clarification, we didn't pass anything in the last meeting. I think there was discussion about whether or not to move forward with those two fees, the benefit fee and the equity fee. But I don't know, did we ever, I don't recall.
It was to direct staff to create a
We anticipate bringing that back in November. We would want to have But nothing has been implemented yet. Concurrent to any sort of decision that you would make, so that it's in place before you make the decision. It could be done as item number one, and then whatever decision's item number two, but we would want to have that in place as soon as we can. And then, of course, it would take effect upon publication.
I'll throw one other thing out. In our initial discussions, and maybe the developer, they, they perhaps offered maybe to have an initial discussion with that property owner to the east. I don't know if any inroads were made there for, for a possible easement. If they might be willing to help the city there, you know, they could contribute in that manner if they could knew that property. I don't even know the property owner, if they made any inroads. But if they haven't, then we'll just have to come up with an estimate for what that easement cost might be.
We're going to have some solve by next meeting? Is that what we're thinking? Is that good? A good direction on which way we need to go?
I'll just end it up by saying, I put it in the letter, and I just have to reiterate it. They'll put over $60 million of construction on this site, so, and they want to go. They just finished one in May's, 20 acres, and you pulled how many permits, every permit's pulled since April, 60?
60 permits, yeah.
60 permits, in all their states. So they go, these guys go. So thank you very much for your time, and we look forward to coming back in a couple of weeks. Many thanks.
Honorable Mayor and Council, we have our third quarter reports for this year. All of our operations are based upon a mission, vision, values statement that you get reiterated every quarter as well as every budget cycle. Our vision statements that Goddard's a vibrant, growing community, I'm sorry, a community growing and accessible to destination of a family-oriented, active lifestyle, with the mission being, the mission of the city of Goddard is to work cooperatively and efficiently to provide a vibrant community that's growing and accessible for our neighbors. We aim to be a destination for a family-oriented, active lifestyle. The vision statement was selected by the community at large. The council at the time in 2014, when this vision statement was created, and the city organization itself didn't have anything to do with that. The mission statement was crafted by the council at the time and the city employees serving the council and the citizens. The values were crafted with that same group, which is people first, stewardship, solution-oriented, collaborative, effective, and efficient. This is the strategic cycle that we use, where we, we take those mission and vision statements, as well as our community strategic plan and the comprehensive land use plan. And in our budget document, that's where we have our scorecards and how we measure the objectives and initiatives for each work group. And then from there, we assess those and tie them in with our employee performance or individual development plans. And all of that is reinforced through our annual budget process that we undertake each year. And then it's just kind of a continual feedback loop of assessing successes and shortcomings and changing those priorities as the budgetary or environmental factors impact that. We show this frequently. You last saw it during the budget year. However, the population numbers have changed as we now have our 2020 census numbers. Essentially shows you most of the first-tier suburbs, with the exception of Wichita, including Andover and Butler County, showing the total number of full-time equivalent employees, the total mill levy, how that mill levy is broken down by jurisdiction, and the population. And you'll notice that Andover has roughly 98 employees, Bel Air 42, with a population of 8262, 190 in Derby with a population of 25,625. They're the second largest city after the city of Wichita. Hayesville, I don't know why we don't have the FTEs there. I think there was some issue on how they were, they were counted. But there are 11,000. Comparable cities to Goddard are May's, which has a population of 5,735. Our population's 5,084. May's has 41. Park City has 45. And then, of course, we have 31. And we have the lowest mill levy of any city in the city, in the county, other than the city of Iowa. And with that, I'll turn it over to Terry to begin the administration report.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'll start off with just the agenda items process. In 2021, in this third quarter, there was 29 agenda items. We adopted six ordinances, five resolutions. Staff prepared over 584 pages in briefing materials and agendas for six sessions of the city council. We had wine, caramel, beverage, which was an event permit. As far as vendor permits issued, there was none. Compliance invoices sent and compliance invoice collected for the third quarter are usually not processed. Human resources. We had two voluntary separations and one new hire, and we sold one employee that is on military leave. So we are at 28 employees. We had 15 seasonal lifeguards in the quarter. Vacation hours was 1,304 hours used. 202 of that, though, was paid out for our separation of employment. We had 511 sick hours, 595 hours of overtime, and we had 190 hours of COVID, people taking off for leave for COVID. Water and sewer customers, we've, from 2018 to 2019, and actually several prior years prior to that, we were at about a 2% a year increase. But from 2019 to 21, it has moved to 5% per year. Reconnect fees collected, $1,020. Bad loss of bad debt keeps going up. We're currently at $34,744. We did move $1,056 into new debt or new bad debt, and $223 remains uncollectible. So that's for a death or bankruptcy or those type items. And then we did move, or we collected $1,400 from set-off program. Accounts payable, we processed 461 invoices, issued 326 checks, and the total amount issued was $2,342,922. And I've included the total number of active projects that we have compared to prior years, and that kind of correlates with the total amount that we've paid out. Municipal court, jail fees were 366 for the quarter. We had an increase to 322 cases and 305 defendants, which you can see in 2020 because of COVID, was down considerably from the other prior years. 20 dismissals, we had zero jailed for the third quarter. And collecting the money is still pretty difficult. We had 17 pay in full. Seven made a 30-day agreement. Forty-one wanted to pay in three to six months, and we issued 42 warrants. And I'll just send it up to them.
Any questions for Terry?
No. Okay. Good evening. So as you saw in your agenda reports, most of this information is the same. So a little summary of the police department. In September, another hire was made for an open officer position. He'll begin the 14-week academy on November 1st, followed by a 16-week field training period. That should put us around what, into May, middle of June, somewhere in there. As Terry said, Officer Jason Wolf is placed on Navy Reserve active duty orders August 1st, 2019, and he will remain likely there, probably on orders continuing each year through August of 2023. Sergeant Mark Hearn remains on light duty from an undetermined amount of time, dealing with injuries he sustained in a January 2020 crash where he was rear-ended. And Officer Christian Correa is resigning on the 23rd after one year here, taking a job outside of law enforcement. That will leave currently one officer position open for hiring, and the other position left.
And it's important to note that Officer Correa retired previously from the LAPD. So it's not like he was here for a year and decided.
He did, he did 16 years with the LAPD. That kind of takes a toll on someone. Then, just so you knew what the starting pay was for the first hire that we had, the last hire we just made was $1581 an hour, which equates to $32,884 yearly. Staffing, the allotment is for 14 commissioned personnel plus an additional one non-commissioned community service officer, records clerk, who is Asia. Our current available commissioned working staff right now is nine, with one in training, one in light duty, and one on military leave. one in light duty, and one on military leave. During this third quarter, we had 428 dispatched calls. 947 were self-initiated. 186 traffic citations, 359 warnings, 29 arrests, that includes felony and misdemeanor. During that third quarter, 142 building checks, 11 motor assist, 17 alarms, and 120 current warrants is what we have through the court system. During the third quarter, animal control calls, they gave us 22 of them. Animal, large cases that we made were eight, and we had no bites, one neglect case. Our quarterly cases, we're luckily have no homicides, four battery assaults, one sex crime, or two auto thefts, 12 thefts, six burglaries, six DUI arrests, five financial and fraud cases, 44 assisting outside agency cases, four additional recovering property for outside agencies, and 16 outside agency warrant arrests. We had 21 drug arrests, or drug cases, I should say, during the third quarter, two suicide attempts, two child abuse, five criminal damage vandalism cases, and six violation of PFAs. For accidents, this intersection in the photo right there is 199 Kellogg. But a total of 15 in this third quarter, one of which was a fatality. Three were injury, 10 were non-injury, and one of them was a courtesy report, which means under 1,000. Nine of those 15 were related to US 54 Highway, and six of those 15 were red light related. Community involvement during the third quarter. We had National Night Out. We had Make-A-Wish, Show and Shine Car Show that we took a car to. I attended the Wichita area crime commission dinner. And Officer Perez also attended a fundraiser at Mrs. Cole's Tropical Snow. As you can see, I think even though Mr. Larkin probably raised more money and took more shots, I think I actually got more on me.
I haven't.
So I'll just kind of give you some case highlights. I try to keep it to about three or four or five. One case, starting with most recently, the residential burglary in progress. We were dispatched to report of a burglary in progress. We took a single male in custody as he exited the residence. He had forced entry through a side garage door early in the morning, realized the occupant was in the home, and waited until that occupant left, then made re-entry and started collecting items to steal with an individual waiting in a vehicle to pick them up. That individual fled, and we've later identified him and seized the vehicle. Had a felony theft on September 13th with a cell phone. Credit cards were left on a bench out here in the park. Fraudulent purchases were made later with that card, with the stolen card. And suspect was ID'd using cameras in Linear Park and cameras at the stores where the credit cards were used. Not a really big loss necessarily financially to the victim, but obviously if your cell phone and your cards are taken, that is a headache towards you and a little bit of a loss towards yourself. A lot more time went into just solving this case and presenting a presentation to the district attorney on that than you can imagine. Felony theft on August 13th, where a citizen reported unauthorized use of his credit card with multiple transactions made at local retailers and online money transfer apps. Two suspects were ID'd through a lot of work and through video evidence obtained from retailers and transaction history of the credit card. Another significant kind of case highlight we had was a battery of a spouse and a child in a home here in Goddard in July, where officers responded to a domestic disturbance between spouses and later identified a minor child that was a victim as well. Those cases have been charged, and we have no current cases pending to go to the district attorney's office. Any questions for this third quarter, at least?
So we're sure one officer wants Officer Correa leaves. An additional, the chief position is a body within the agency that will need to be filled somewhere.
So is it fun, are you finding it hard to get new recruits?
Yes. Yes. Very hard. Obviously, everyone in almost any field is having trouble finding someone suitable or any candidates, but I can't speak for aircraft or any other agency, but I know we receive very few applicants. We're very blessed and lucked out with the latest applicant with Officer Little.
You think it's maybe the rate?
Probably has a lot to do with it when you have local agencies around.
I have a lot of guys that don't know anything at 15, so...
But do they have 100% full-free insurance? Our employees do.
Well, we have insurance.
Yes, but we pay their whole premium. So that's part of, you have to look at the whole benefit package, not just the... I get what you're saying about making sure they're fully compensated, but...
My employees don't have to arrest felonies and...
I understand that.
And gun violence and all that stuff. No, they don't have to do any of that.
Right. And I completely understand that. I'm not saying that we shouldn't look at what they're paying, but there's more pieces to the puzzle than just that one dollar is what I'm saying.
I just think they should make a little bit more of what that is.
I definitely agree.
And we can also check about adjusting retirement and see about, you know, we're in the process of doing a study, so preliminary.
Okay, Mayor and City Council. Our numbers are almost back to pre-COVID, so we're excited about that. Our circulation numbers looked really well and good in the third quarter. Our attendance has been way up. Manly, we do count online stuff as well, but our interlibrary line stuff is still way up. These are all our partners that we partnered with for our early literacy multisensory kits so far. So we have 21 of those now, and they are checked out all the time. So everybody's really getting a lot of use out of them. We did a recycled lid project with the women's club. That's Chica Chica Boom Boom with the tree there. We got a grant from Sickles to do the garden, and so we had a card catalog in the basement, brought it up, and now we have a seed library that we took some of the seeds out of our garden. We've had other people donate, and we had a business donate some seeds as well. And then Finn, the library dog, we are going to start, actually, he starts training Wednesday, but he's very social and he loves the kids, so I think he's going to do pretty good. We can just get him not to be stung.
Is he registered?
Yes.
Okay.
He is.
Just clear.
He is. I cannot breed him, though.
Is he licensed?
He's 13 weeks old. Let me remember. So we participated in Amazing Race and National Night Out. We have the seed library. We got the grant for the RVs, so yes, that's, it's got, the bedroom is now, got everything out of it, the cabinets in the bed and all that stuff out. The bathroom's got everything out of it. And we've gotten one wall taken down. I haven't talked to her this week to see what they did over the weekend, but making progress there, so that's exciting. We've got the community survey going on to get ideas because we need to do another strategic plan because ours ends the end of 2022. And we got a new bench out front of the library when we partnered with Alliance Club and their bag recycle project. So we're actually going to get another one that matches that one, probably in December. We are doing a digitization project. We've got another grant to get a bunch of equipment to do that. And right now, we have a Judge Police docet from the late 1800s that I found. Don't even ask me where I found it. I just found it going through a cabinet. And so it's already had pictures taken of it, and it'll be available online soon. And we are going to be still working on the bookmobile. We're all going to go to the Kansas Library Association Conference in October, next week actually. And so we'll be closed on Thursday of next week, so everybody can attend. We'll get the annual survey done, and our hours November 1st will be from 9:30 to 6:00 Monday through Friday, 9:01 Saturday and 1:00 for Sunday. And we're going to keep growing our outreach and our partnerships, and we hope to have a new logo soon. We had somebody donate their time to do that, so we're looking at that as well.
Honorable Mayor and Council, third quarter public works, a little bit of the numbers. We filled a significant amount of potholes, and we continue to do that, and continue to sweep the streets. Not as many signs installed this quarter, but Thatcher and I are getting ready to install a bunch of the 25 mile-hour children's safety signs, starting later this week. Water service shut-offs, we've had 23 of those, 230-meter rereads, which we are down significantly from third quarter last year. We have zero water main breaks. We've had a couple of large leaks that were near water mains that bumped our water loss up a little bit, but we found those and took care of them. The water used is kind of interesting. We're down a little bit from this period last year, but the interesting thing, last year, when I was comparing month to month, because our splash pad and our pool were the only venues open in 2020, we pumped nearly 13 million gallons more water in June and July of last year than we did this year. And that was really great for the community because it was fun to see Derby and other cities, they had to come to us to make it happen. And so, yeah, kind of makes us feel good. Zero valves replaced this quarter. We've been exercising valves somewhat. Again, with the construction, we're doing quite a few locates. Our average well depth is actually, it's pretty static. It moves within a couple feet on a regular basis. We're at 38 feet. The plant numbers are also down. You can see that is also related to the influent numbers, inflow. That is also related to less use on the splash pad during that June-July period, July in particular on this quarter. Again, we've met all of our KDHU permit standards. Something that's not on here, that Terry said we have two voluntary separations over both public works. We have filled one of those positions. We got a very good candidate. He's been on about two weeks, and we put him in at the plant, and he has, he's hit the ground running, and we're very happy with him. Parks, we poured some pads and installed additional permanent trash cans in Linear Park. Obviously, we planted quite a few flowers to get ready for the fall fest. And as we do every third quarter, we winterized a pool complex. Just today, we winterized and shut down the splash pad. We tried to keep that open as long as it's being used. It hasn't been used recently, so it's time. Water and drainage, as we all know, we did, had a complete rebuild of both well seven and well four. We replaced HVAC system in the chlorine building. And we, something triennial, one something we do every third year in this involves community, the community has to get involved in this. We collect and submit water samples from homes around the town so they can check for lead and copper in the water. And we have to find homes that still have copper pipes with lead soldering. And so we've got quite a few community members, about 15, that will voluntarily give water to us, and we're very, very thankful for that. The picture there is the VAC trailer that council approved a couple of months ago. This thing has been a great tool to have. As I said when I presented it and asked to purchase it, it's kind of a force multiplier. We can go out with that thing, and we are able to just really, really take a lot of the hard work out and make stuff go quicker so we can do more work in a shorter amount of time. Streets and rightways, we always, third quarter, paint the crosswalks, get ready for school to start. We continue to street sweep all the time. You'll see some more of that in the next week and a half or so. We mitigated a drainage issue on industrial drive near the recycling center. We had a backup there, and we dug all that out, and it seems to flow really well now. And then we had a large hole in the apron that people kind of got grchy about on social media. We repaired that, and that's held up well.
I think that photo that I highlighted on that accident was actually where you guys came out and swept a whole bunch of clients off Kellogg.
Yes, it was. That was a bad accident. We helped the police department, and they helped us. We work together really well with them when needed. This isn't really a street picture, but I want to add this here because it's something new that we just recently started. If we are putting a water line in and it has to go under a street, we're no longer tearing that street up because we can get, no walk to come out here, bring their drill out and drill and bore that and pull that line through for about a fifth of the cost as it would cost us to cut that street and repair it. So that's saving us money. It's making it quicker, it's less invasive. The people like it better because we don't have a street all ripped up. So that's something that we just began this quarter. At the wastewater plant, we replaced the aging morn airlines and conduit at the wastewater plant. We hit the left side of the plant this quarter, third quarter, fourth quarter. We'll hit the right side of the plant. And all those airlines run everything out there. It's quite a complex system. We pulled and cleaned the landia chopper pumps in the main lift station at the wastewater plant, which is always an interesting and fun job. And we replaced an inoperable air compressor at the plant. Some of our third, fourth quarter preview stuff is street maintenance. You may have seen last Friday, Circle C was out crack filling. They did paint, they did part of Fourth Street and north part of Walnut Street from Walnut down to Third. And there, we're preparing that because next, this week, correction, 22nd, 23rd, they're going to be out microsealing those areas, which will preserve that pavement and keep it, keep it nice and pliable so it doesn't crack up as easily. We're going to clean and do maintenance at spring of lift station, and of course, prepare for the Christmas tree lighting. And as I mentioned earlier, we're going to install child safety signs in the neighborhoods. Here's a little rundown of our, just for an update on the pavement rehabilitation program. It kind of shows from year to year what we do to assure that the roads stay in good shape. Right now, we're looking at, we did some crack sealing, and so we're going to, right here in those areas where those roads are new, we're doing the, basically the rejuvenator. That's what the microseal will do. Here's a map of where we're going here. Obviously, everyone knows where Payday is, so that'll be hit Wednesday, Thursday, Friday this week. They're going to do a little bit of Fourth, and then they're going to do Walnut down to Third Street. I've been talking to school and working with them, make sure we can, I guess, that is Walnut, make sure we don't interrupt their busing operations. And so we've been communicating that with them. The pavement work is being done. It's part of our annual maintenance, and the focus is to preserve the pavement, as I said earlier. And we're doing this stuff in this time of year because it's always better to crack seal in the fall or winter months because the, how the pavement heats, expands and contracts with the summer weather, it's better to do it when it's cooled off some. Any questions? Thank you.
All the wells are running well?
All the wells are running. Everything's producing well, properly. We did shut down well fine because it was getting close to its pumping capacity. It runs fine, but we shut it off just to preserve that capacity in case we have an issue and have to turn it back on if something else were to go down. But we're having no issue with our wells at all at this point.
Honorable governing body, I'm filling in for Mike tonight, and trust me, it's our issues to fill, so I'm going to do the best I can here. So new single-family homes, quite a bit more going up there. 14, a little bit down from Q3 of 2020, but 14 going in. Permit values, $15,542. The TAP value is $42,000. And the project value there is $3,934,450. Quite a bit of roofing and siding to go in to match those new homes. Not much commercial going on. Consistent number of electrical permits, mechanical permits, plumbing, and then for a total of All that generated $5,367,868. So in the third quarter of 2021, the city again issued 14 single-family detached permits, which is a little bit lower than last year. Total permit fees for Q3 of this year was $24,877, with $51,000 in TAP fees, for a total of $75,877. Also, nuisance abatement. Have 23 for the year-to-date and four for this quarter so far. Jump motor vehicles, three in this quarter. No nuisance, eight environmental, five other, for a total of 20 and 55 on the year-to-date. Also, the city worked on one unfit habitation in 2021, which was demolished, which is a property here on North Cedar. property here on North Cedar. RV and boats are kind of a constant battle. As soon as you can catch one, the next one's out. I know Mike is constantly chasing that, so give him a lot of credit for driving the city and being on top of that. And then, of course, junk cars are losing battle. So Arbor Creek has sold a total of 41 lots, 59 out of Phase 1. There are 245 lots total in this development and that leaves about 82% available for sale. They're going up very quick out there at Arbor Creek now. Cloverleaf has 56 lots sold for this development, Phase 1, Phase 2. There are 130 lots total in this development and that leaves 57% available for sale. Elk Ridge nearing the finish line, 74 out of 77 lots, only three remaining for sale. Moving quickly out there too.
And this is for the quarter because those have now come in and they're completely sold. So this is for the end of Q3, not?
So Elk Ridge is totally built.
Yes.
Rustic Creek paving, stormwater grading has begun for this development. The lots for this development will be 105, so they're just starting to do the grading there. You're kind of seeing where the drive is going in and cul-de-sacs.
So, quick question.
Yeah.
On Elk Ridge, when do we go from temporary to permanent financing? How soon does that happen?
That should occur in the next 12 to 18 months. Because it was a three-year issuance. And then we'll have to have what's known as an assessment hearing and oftentimes, people forget that they have assessments coming. And so, every now and again, we'll get one or two people show up.
Yeah.
So this is just that current map that Mike had put together for us and Brian went pretty good detail on last year, but just outlining our developments here, Rustic Creek, Cloverleaf, Seasons.
See, doesn't that look so much better than the individual slides that we used to show before Mike had got here? That had that same information, it just lacked all the pretty, the pretty graphics.
Mike is a map master, so. St. Andrew up here, or Elk Ridge, excuse me. St. Andrew over here in Spring Hill and down here is Arbor Creek. Alrighty, so in the planning commission, back in July, we had a report from the Chamber of Commerce in August, CUP for boat and RV storage, which I believe passed through the county. Preliminary plat for Aaron Schnook property, along with the final plat. Can't remember what that was specifically. Do you?
That's the kiosk.
Oh, okay. Then amended Article 2 for the general land use definitions. So back in September, we discussed the rezoning of the land off of Goddard Road and 23rd Street, right next to the community garden. And then the Star Bond Plan Amendment for Phase 2. And that's all I had, if there's any questions.
We have a clue to the finances for the third quarter. This is just a snapshot of the quarter's fund balance for all of our operating and reserve capital funds. You can see we've got total cash of $60,400. No one pointed out that a good chunk of that, 5.5 in capital improvement, that's temporary notes, so that's not fund money or anything. We also have $100,000 of Tananika's CID funds. General Fund, we'll get a fund balance a little bit later, but General Fund, water and sewer are all up over last year, which is, has us in a good operating position. As you see here, General Fund, line in red is up. We had, you know, we've, we've been budgeting for full, full staff through PD and, you know, so we haven't had a full staff there, so that's why we've had initial, we've had some additional fund balance, but we've also just have not been spending like we normally would, especially last year with COVID. Special Highway Fund is in purple and you see that's kind of arcing back down, but we're doing that intentionally. We're not transferring in as much as we usually do because we had more fund balance in that fund than we had budgeted for, so that's strategic bringing that back down. And Bond Interest Fund, as you can see, is up considerably over where it's been the last few years, but that's mostly due to our, it's mostly pass-through money from basically converting temporary to permanent financing. And water blue sewer is the kind of very large color there. That's, the fund balances are up as well. And we will probably see that steep incline dropping now that we've lowered our water sewer rates. I was going to point out a couple of things here with General Fund. We're at 85% total of our budgeted revenue for the year, which is kind of ahead of pace, which is a good thing. Taxes are, our tax revenue is up, both sales tax for all, all categories of sales tax as well as our property tax. And we knew that was going to be the case because we continue to have increased valuation growth. And for expenditures, we're, we've got over 30, over 38% of our budget authority left for the General Funds. We're in good shape there. As you can see here, property tax is up. This is, this is all, this is only General Fund, property tax revenue. Sales taxes, you can see, also is up quite a bit over last year. We, last year's been very good for us in sales tax. This is just a breakdown showing where our revenues come from. Blue is property tax, red is sales tax. Those are two primary revenue generators for the General Fund. This is General Fund expenditures by department, just showing where we're at for budget through three quarters of the year. Everything's pretty much in line where it should be. The one thing that we'll point out here, down here where it says 205% of non-operating expenses, that was, that was the CARES Act money that we paid out to those recipients and that's where that got reported, so we didn't actually overspend. That's just, you know, money that we didn't have in the budget that we ended up paying out because we received it from the state. And this is just a breakdown of where we spend money in the General Fund. 24% of it is the general administrative operations essentially. And the blue, 46%, that's, that's law enforcement, police department administration. Water Fund, we've received about 71% of budget, budget revenue so far this year. expenditure side, we've spent about 54%. Sewer Fund, we've spent about half of our budget authority. We received about 75% of our revenue, which we should expect to be this time of year. Streets, we have received almost all of our budgeted taxes and that's highway, that's state and county fuel taxes essentially that we receive. And we will probably have another small, one or, one or two smaller regular disbursements from them. Our revenue is actually up for the year for that because they are essentially paying us back money that was withheld in prior years. And as far as street operations, we're at 43% of budget. The reason that looks so low is because we have not paid for the street maintenance projects yet. And that's all I have unless you have any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Honorable Mayor Counsel, this is, will be brief as seen a lot of what's normally contained in my report. The Star Bond image, you can see that's continuing to progress with the hotel facing nearest, the health club with the childcare facility on the background. That higher roof line is the aquatic center, I'm sorry, the water park with this concave roof being the water center. The publicly funded portion is this lower roof line in blue and the ball fields. All of this other stuff is funded with private money on the one-to-one match for the Star Bond statue. Just additional views of the Star Bond and seeing the roundabout and looking back southwest. You've seen this already, that's just an update on our residential lot units, which Thatcher highlighted previously during Mike's report. Arbor Creek, this is the clubhouse area that's under construction and there'll be a nice pool there as well. Looking back toward Amelia Earhart and you can see the water tower in the background there with 23rd on the far north side of the image. Cloverleaf is, was addressed, is continuing to proceed. We're in Phase 2, which is this gray area here. The dots indicate the respread agreement that was undertaken earlier this year as There's images of Cloverleaf looking to the south and then back to the, the north. Elk Ridge, which you can tell is continuing to proceed with construction and there's the compaction that's occurring for the roadway for Rustic Creek. You can see some of the cul-de-sac outlines there with the stormwater just in the upper right-hand corner. And you can see the sewer pipes, it looks like, there. And then the stormwater, you can kind of make out there too. Brooke touched on this in his report, but it's just our rehabilitation cycle for our pavement preservation that we undertake. Essentially, every three to six years, we're trying to get some sort of preservation treatment or cap on top of our roadways so that will allow for their life cycle to, to be extended well beyond the 20-year cycle. So you can, with regular care and maintenance, which is what we try and cycle through, you can easily get 40 to 60 years in a roadway. Showing the pavilion and its paving, I'm sorry, it's staining and the concrete base there. Looking back, you can tell that the interior has been stained as well, so the concrete gives a nice little contrast to the color there. And just showing the slats with the tension rods on the slide doors. The view of 100 Cedar, which has been finalized and essentially leveled and left as is. And just to update you, last meeting, you approved the sale of the 901 main property behind Orlshlands. That's approximately $1.50 per square foot, which is estimated to be in the ballpark of $263,175. That agreement that the mayor signed's been executed by the buying party. And so, we'll be working forward here in the coming months with getting the title evidence, property condition, all that's happening now through security title. And then the closing date will occur after the due diligence when the mayor will execute that final paperwork at that time. We've got our community cleanup on Saturday, November 20th from 8:00 to 11:30. Just to reiterate, we'll be putting this out on social media as well. No mattresses, batteries, paint, chemicals, et cetera. Then the following April will be the spring cleanup in conjunction with Neighbors United. So I thank Brooke and the Public Works team because they always go all hands. Thatcher gets out there too with his working boots and gets a little sunburn. And then, as Brooke mentioned, we'll be placing, starting this week, the Drive 25 Keep Kids Alive. We'll be focused on Spring Hill and St. Andrews and then follow that up with Autumn Blaze, Sunset and our new housing developments as they come online in November. Notable items, we'll have planning commission terms, Goddard Women's Club presentation for their annual report, building design standards, Open Gun software, which has been upgraded. And somewhere between the 1st and the 15th, depending on the time, we'll also give you a rundown on our winter storm response and highlight all of the various items on our Public Works Storm Response page, which includes links to KDOT and the CAN drive and which way cameras. So we wanted to try and educate our neighbors and community members on that. So if they ever have family traveling or they're traveling during inclement weather, they'll know they can come to our Public Works Storm Response page to get links to multiple cameras around the metro area in state, as well as an updated snow route map with all of our growth that we've had in our property tax base. That means we're obviously needing to increase our coverage there. So if there are no questions on my report, I'll turn it over for governing body comments.
Larry?
Well, I know that those that would like to see their growth happening, but I also know we talked about responsible growth. We also talked about redevelopment paying their own way. And if we've got to chip in $300,000, probably maybe correctly, I'm a little wrong, I was going with $200,000 if those water lines extended, that's a half a million dollars. We've already promised the public, put in a few things like build a community center and things like that. And if we give this money to them and somebody following them wanting the same thing, and somebody following them wanting the same thing, then the stuff we've promised to the public will never happen. So you need to keep that in mind when we're dishing out money that we're either going to have to borrow or else take out of the kitty that was meant to go somewhere else that was already promised. Just to see more development, more rooftops. And to me, I thought we established that we wanted them to pay their own way through these two new funds so that we wouldn't have to dip into our account and then to pass that along to each lot as they're developed. Leave them on specials, let them pay like everybody else had to pay in this town. When we developed South Main and put that road through there, I didn't have the city coming in and bailing me out. I had two sets of specials that I had to pay for 20 years. So why should it be any different for any new development? Let them pay their own way. The only other thing I had is, I didn't know that property that we're cleaning up or checking into, where that new complex is, is there, is that going to be cleaned up or is that our packet?
Yes. I believe that it was supposed to have been done on Wednesday with the rains. I don't think they could get, because they were also going to do the finished grade leveling that was to occur.
I've seen the bricks stacked up there for probably a month and a half and no one's laid them yet.
They, they said via email, the developer, a week or two before they'd at least clean up the pile a little bit. So I'm sure Mike will be checking with them tomorrow when he's back, but they indicated that they're going to be opening it up pretty soon, so that final grade will be coming really anytime. But I don't know if the rain affected that, but that's at least what the developer said via email.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was thinking of the, the finished grade and the dirt piles, not the bricks. But I just, I just don't want the public to feel like that we just talk a good game and don't follow through. And if we just start spending all our money on this development stuff and it keeps coming, we'll never have the money to fulfill what we promised. That's all I've got to say.
Sarah? Michael?
Yeah, I hope for the analysis on, you know, how we get more of it. I am excited for the Drive 25 signs to go in and maybe what, would they have heard from Duke, have you found that again? Thanks. I mean, you know, certain things, like they don't have to change the law, do people slow down a little bit? Presumably.
Do you believe that was a text message I sent you from Indover?
Yeah. And then we, from there, found the, Thatcher found the signs that were different than theirs, but.
Yeah. It was good, yeah, it was good.
Because that's where I saw them too.
Yeah, I saw them, saw them drawing around there. Sweet, I slowed down more. And ever since then, I've kind of slowed down a little bit. Just wait till I get the right route out.
You could have gone to South and drink some.
I'll go out by your house.
Yeah, we'll stay in there. I'll let you slow down.
Now, was it two years ago, we voted down on the land that was going to be put over there? Because they were going to, and a lot of city showed up because there's going to be duplexes built on it. And in this meeting, he said there's going to be duplexes built in that neighborhood. Was it our?
Well, that's off the side there. There's no real housing up against them over there. And the reason I voted against it for duplexes is because they were going to have to empty out a wall.
Oh, okay.
And emptying out a wall, that means they had nowhere to go other than either the residential or back on 23rd or back up on Walnut.
Yeah.
And if, if they would have had an entrance coming down on 23rd, I would have ordered to pay with the duplexes.
I just remembered some of the people showing up that live across the street from it complaining about duplexes because their properties were $600,000 to $700,000, they said, you know, at the time. I knew they were complaining about duplexes being moved across the street from their houses. Do you remember that? And they showed up to this meeting and said right from the city council. Anyway, just putting what I remember in, so otherwise, I had a good week. Thank you, city. You guys did a great job.
Is that all you had?
That's all I had.
Sarah, you have one more thing?
Several people I've noticed have questioned when Goddard is doing Halloween, since it falls on a Sunday, but we've never changed it correctly. We always do it on the actual day.
That's what we've done since I've been here.
That's, I've been here 20 years and that's what I thought.
Is that all you have? Okay. I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Michael, second by Brad, hold on, have a second.